I would like to advise all those present that notice of this special meeting of the Municipal Council of the City of Bayonne has been provided to the public in accordance with the provisions of the Open Public Meetings Act of the State of New Jersey. It's the meeting of the Municipal Council of the City of Bayonne for March 1st, 2023. Notice of time and place of this meeting was posted and filed with the city clerk and was forwarded to the Jersey Journal and Star Ledger by fax and regular mail on...
February 24th.
February 24th, 2023. The special meeting of the Municipal Council is now in session. Ms. Medina, please call the roll.
Mr. Booker?
Here.
Mr. Carroll?
Here.
Mr. Perez?
Here.
Ms. Weimer?
Here.
Mr. La Paluza?
Here. Please rise for the pledge.
My allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our first item is from the Honorable James M. Davis calling a special meeting of the Municipal Council for Wednesday, March 1st, 2023 at 7:00 PM. Would you like to receive it?
So.
And on that one, Mr. Booker?
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Weimer?
Aye.
Mr. La Paluza?
Aye. I'd like to read a statement. "The main reason for the special meeting was to address the three ordinances involving the movie studio that we discussed at length at our regular meeting on February 15th, 2023, and to vote on a redevelopment agreement resolution for the site that had been finalized after that meeting. Unfortunately, there was an inconsistency in our special meeting notice regarding the ordinances, and our attorneys advised that, given how important and complicated this project is, it will be better for all parties involved, the City of Bayonne, the residents, the developers, the unions, if we renotice the three ordinances and the redevelopment agreement for inclusion at our regular meeting of March 15th, 2023. I think it is better that we get this done right rather than right now, and I also think that giving the council another two weeks to review the documents and speak with our professionals is a good thing. We're voting on a couple of items that are time-sensitive today. We can move forward with the remaining items on the special meeting agenda after we vote to carry each of the movie studio-related items to the March 15th, 2023 meeting." Ms. Medina?
Oh, one is an ordinance of the City of Bayonne, County of Hudson, State of New Jersey approving a financial agreement buying between the City of Bayonne and Togus Urban Renewal LLC for the property identified as Block 332, Lots 3, Block 360, Lot 2, Block 390, Lots 1 and 2, and Block 391, Lots 1 and 2. It was introduced at a meeting held January 25th, was given a second and was postponed given a second meeting at the meeting of February 15th, and was postponed to this special meeting of March 1st, is now may have a motion to postpone to March 15th.
So move.
Excuse me.
Hang on.
Since it's on the agenda, I have a right to speak on it?
The Council President?
Sure, I'll let you speak.
Good evening, Gil Gadesky, 828 Kennedy Boulevard. Good evening. I'm so glad that you made that statement and you realized that it was the right thing to do. In accordance with Robert's Rules, I will address all my questions to the Chair, Council President La Paluza, and in return, I would expect that the Chair would be the one to respond as stated in Robert's Rules. Of course, if the Chair needs to confer with others on the day as before responding, that's fine. Now, I was going to say Neal's favorite word again, that it behooves me to be responsible and ask that these ordinances not be done because it would be a notice violation, and I'm so happy that you recognize that it would have been. Now, my question is, why the rush, Council President? You each did... Sorry, I was having trouble with my phone. I had to write everything down. The right thing at February's meeting, and again, today you started doing the right And I'm glad you're going to get more information before making this decision. So that being said, why? Why does a French financier need or guarantee to provide $65 million for an almost $1 billion project? Noted at the last meeting, one of the representatives stated that due to inflation, these major changes were made to the design. I note I noted that they were major. I believe he considered them minor. However, I can't let it go. If I was getting a construction loan for, say, 10-story building with two bedrooms and three bathrooms, and all of a sudden I changed it to one bedroom and two bathrooms, that immediately triggers a question regarding the amount of the loan. Common sense, absolute common sense. You saw the renderings, I hope you saw the renderings from the planning department. It's totally different. I originally asked others on this project about the changes. They all agreed that they were major changes. Why do they need our $65 million? Why can't the group go outside for additional funding? Is it inflation, or is it because of our loan and a low interest rate? People are telling me their escrow payment for their mortgage is more than their principal and interest payment. This is unfair to the taxpayers of the City of Bayonne. We are a municipality, not a lending facility. They would be getting a double perk, a low rate and a pilot. Further, I took a ride downtown to see the property, speaking of the pilot. Permits were already issued, they're doing construction with the masses that does not pass the but-for test, and you all know what the but-for test is. I don't think I should have to go through it. With the massive number of pilots this administration has handed out, you should be familiar with the but-for test. And Gary, you know how you stand with buildings, 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 buildings. You used to sit up there before you became president, and you used to vote no. I'm hoping you'll reconsider and vote no. The but-for test is used to ensure that the new development or other activity that renders a property eligible for a tax abatement would not have occurred but for the tax break. A double perk. They already started construction, so they failed the but-for test. This standard is intended to ensure that the benefit is applied only when necessary to stimulate needed development, not in cases where investment would have taken place anyway, and they're taking place anyway. The fact that this already has started approximately one mile of wall, permits are filed and everything, we shouldn't do this. Project is moving ahead, so if you vote yes, and they already started, was this all pre-planned? Was it a charade? All these meetings back and forth, back and forth? Were they already told that they got the pilot when you didn't even vote on it? My godfather always said, the seven Ps. Of course, I will not use the first P because it's a little bit of a profanity, but it goes...
Did you have a question on?
Yes, I do.
Or one?
Yes.
Because you could save for the public speaking.
No, I know, but just let me bear with me. The seven Ps. The first P, you could guess what it is. Poor planning produces poor products and services. We need to take a step back. We need to take a step back and rethink where we want our city to go. Let's take a breath. Rethink this project. That will benefit the entire city and not burden the taxpayers. As I showed you at the last meeting, the renderings have changed a lot. We need to do this right, the right way. There are other ways to finance this project versus a city guarantee and a pilot. The financial agreement should be voted down. Let the developer look for investors like Oceanport and Newark, project did. I am sure that the same investors that would participate in the city's area redevelopment bond process would be able to find investors. In general, we are giving too much to the developers and nothing to our current residents and taxpayers. Those that live here and plan on staying here, not those that plan on leaving, or those through exception work here and building elsewhere, the true stakeholders of the city. With respect, I say, please follow the process and carry and rethink the deal. People may think I'm annoying, but someone has to do this. Someone has to ask questions and do the research. These questions need to be asked, so I'm asking you and telling you, remember your oath, Council. You work for the people of the city, not just those that voted for you. We stand here respectfully and ask you to do your job with respect to us. As for those that were appointed by the administration, you have an obligation to the people of this town, whether you live here or not. So let's not focus on the future, let's deal with the here and now. The median age for the taxpayers of the city is growing, older and older. We're not building condos, we're building properties for rent. I'll finish later, Gary. Again, thank you for pulling this, I appreciate it.
Councilman Perez moved to postpone the final passage to March 15th. Would you like the second?
Second.
And on that resolution to postpone, Mr. Booker?
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Weimer?
Aye.
Mr. La Paluza?
Aye.
Oh, two is an ordinance of the City of Bayonne, County of Hudson, State of New Jersey, providing for the special assessment of the cost of certain improvements on the property identified as Block 332, Lot 3, Block 360, Lot 2, Block 390, Lots 1 and 2, and Block 391, Lots 1 and 2, which was introduced at the meeting held January 25th and was postponed at the meeting of February 15th to this meeting of March 1st, is now and may have a motion to postpone to 3/15.
Move.
Any questions on two?
Respectfully, I'm just asking the Council to please reconsider this and vote no at the next meeting. Thank you.
On the resolution to postpone, Mr. Booker?
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Weimer?
Aye.
Mr. La Paluza?
Aye.
Oh, three is an ordinance of the City of Bayonne, County of Hudson, State of New Jersey, authorizing the guarantee of not to exceed $65 million aggregate principal amount of the city's guaranteed redevelopment area bond. Was introduced at the meeting held January 25th, postponed to the meeting of this meeting of March 1st from the meeting of February 15th. May have a motion to postpone to...
Move. Second.
Council, respectfully, just think what $65 million can do for this city. Many, many times, Gary, you heard me say, let's focus on the infrastructure of the city and then worry about the innards. We need... Look at what happened to Hoboken. A century-old water pipe, people didn't have water for two days. We need to use this money for the good of the people and schools. A 26-story building is going up with three bedrooms. That tells you there's going to be kids. We need to bond for the right reasons for now, not 30 years down the road. So please vote no on this financial agreement. A French financier can get the money they need. They don't need our money. Thank you.
And on the resolution to postpone, Mr. Booker?
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Weimer?
Aye.
Mr. La Paluza?
Aye.
No one signed up to speak, so we'll move forward with the rest of the agenda. Are we moving forward with OR 2, or?
Yes.
Okay. OR 2 is from James M. Davis, appointing the following individuals to the Bayonne Housing Authority with consent and advising consent of the Council.
Bayonne Hospital Authority.
Bayonne Hospital, what did I say? Bayonne Hospital Authority. Would like to move it.
Move it.
Second.
And on OR 2, Mr. Booker?
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Weimer?
Aye.
Mr. La Paluza?
Aye.
Got a question? Or coming?
I just have a question on the hospital board. I think if I recall correctly, didn't we make this board up over a year ago, and now all of a sudden we're filling in the members? Can somebody tell me the reasoning behind this? Like, we waited over a year and a half to fill the board up? You created it? God, I don't know how long ago, a year and a half ago?
It was, I believe, 2019 even, I believe.
All right.
We talked about creating a board in 2019.
But you never...
No, and the mayor decided, I don't know what his reasoning is, but he decided to go ahead and name the board.
Thank you.
Oh, R3 is from James M. Davis, appointing John Skellinger Jr. as a Director of Planning and Zoning and Redevelopment, and a resolution confirming said appointment. Would like to move it.
Move it.
Second.
Any questions on OR 3?
Congratulations, Mr. Skellinger. When is this effective?
Go ahead, you want...
Thank you, Ms. Gadesky. So this would be effective upon, you know, the Council's vote, depending on which way they vote.
Okay, so you can sit there and be this at the same time?
Right now, I'm in the capacity as the lawyer for this board.
I'm sorry?
Right now, I'm in the capacity as a lawyer for the City Council.
Okay, but once they pass this, what happens? Where's our lawyer? You can't hold two spots, can he?
So he's right now in the capacity in this meeting as our lawyer.
Right.
So he will be in this position tomorrow.
He'll be in this position tomorrow, and may I ask what his salary is going to be?
I'm sorry, I don't know that... Donna, do you know the salary? Because I don't.
I believe it's $125.
Thank you. Oh, one more question on that. Was the reorg already done? Is there a new org chart? Because I remember a while ago he has passed reorganization. Has the org chart been completed?
I did not complete any chart.
So there's no reorg chart?
I don't really know what you're referring to.
Well, the ordinance was passed.
Yeah.
The ordinance was... Yeah, that ordinance was, I remember that, yeah.
That's part of the reorganization that would be the process. It added his section as a separate section.
Okay, was that the only change?
Yeah, it added planning and zoning and development.
Okay, but was that the only change for the reorganization of the ordinance that they passed?
Yes.
That was it?
That was it.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else on OR 3? And on OR 3, Mr. Booker?
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Weimer?
Aye.
Mr. La Paluza?
Aye.
Oh, R4 is from the purchasing agent reporting on bids received on February 23rd, 2023 for the improvements to the New Hook Road. There were five bidders. Would you like to move it?
Move.
Second.
Question?
What improvements are we talking about here?
Go ahead, but it's also in reference to R2. Do you want to go through the improvements?
Yes, so procedurally speaking, that this is, again, acknowledging the fact that we have received the bids from there and, you know, for then the next vote for the awarding of the contract for road improvements to the tune of $3.9 million that will become from a grant that will not be paid by the city but from a grant. So the city will, you know, is looking to receive $3.9 million for road improvements.
Where on New Hook Road? Where specifically are we making changes? Because if you remember correctly, a few meetings ago, I believe it was Mr. Coffey talking about looking at the infrastructure and all the piping down there, et cetera, et cetera. So why are we, why are we doing B when we didn't do A yet? To know what's underneath the ground? That makes no sense to me. No sense at all. So why would you give a contractor the money to do improvements to Hook Road when they may have to tear it up to find out what's underneath?
So part of this is also, again, raising the road elevations to make sure that it meets FEMA flood standards for that?
But it's, excuse me for interrupting, but it that makes no sense. You're going to be doing research and hiring consultants to look at everything that the roads need and the piping needs and this, that, and the other thing that's going to take care of the whole Bayonne, and now you're going to hire a contractor to do B before A is even done? Come on, guys. You got to think outside the box here.
I don't understand your questioning on this.
Do you remember when Jay said that they're hiring a consultant to look at from Exxon all the way down and all over? So you don't know where the piping is. That's what I understood from the meeting. That's why you're hiring somebody to find out what it is we need and how...
So they know where, whatever pipes are under the ground, they know where the pipes are.
Well, no, if you look back at the minutes to the meeting...
As a point of clarification on this, are you referring to the hydraulic study?
Everything that Jay Coffey talked about, and I think it was former President Nadrowski that asked the question, isn't this going to impact all Bayonne?
So...
And he responded, yes. So if you're, if piping Exxon, New Hook Road, all that there, there's piping underneath. Jay said point-blank straight out, we don't know what's there. It's over 100 years old. He said that.
I don't know if he meant specifically the pipes. He doesn't know what we're going to find when we start digging.
No, he meant the pipes, Gary.
Because we had talked about contaminated land and everything else.
Respectfully, I'm asking you to table this until the March 15th meeting so you could get clarification. That's all I'm asking.
Gary, can I maybe give some clarification based on what I know? Okay, this is a local impact freight grant that we applied for back in 2019. We received one grant for $2.5 million. We then applied for it in 2020 and got another $1.4 million. We had to do environmental studies. It's all in conjunction with Hook Road and the gullies that were there before. There was no drainage. All the rain that came down went into those gullies, half of the gullies were filled in.
Right.
We're going to put new sewers in that are going to connect to the outfall that goes out into, I guess that's the Hudson River, I guess we call it right around that area.
But I remember the conversation was...
But that's what this is. This has nothing to do with what Jay was talking about with the hydraulic study. That was inside of IMTT and that other development that was going on.
And Exxon, too.
But the conversation I remember was that the gullies couldn't hold the water and it kept flooding down there.
They don't.
And that's why we need to put new infrastructure, new pipes down there.
Example would be Booker Zine floods out and can't even get his employees to work when we get certain floods. All that water from 440 comes down. It doesn't go past the old Delta storage, and it doesn't make... Meccas was the only one that was actually kind of functioning. And the pipes are all, there are some pipes that are there, and then the rest is a gully. It all feeds to a pump station. All of that is antiquated. The Hook Road floods out. You know, when you get a big flood, we can't even get down to Central Garage. We have to pull all our vehicles out of Central Garage when we anticipate a flood, just so that we can respond in case we need anyone to rescue or we need a, just to get around. So this was...
So are you saying on the record, Director Carter, that this is not going to impact what Jay Coffey was talking about, and we're not going to have to redig everything up again and repair everything up again? Is that what, are you saying that on the record? Is it possible that what the, what the other report is going to show is that you're going to have to redo something that you're planning on doing now?
Yeah, I don't know if he can guarantee that something's not going to have to be redug.
Can't guarantee.
I mean, you know...
The scope of the work, we're talking from coming down 440, down New Hook Road, down towards Central Garage. That's where we're going. All of those gullies and repaving the road.
Is it going to impact traffic?
Anytime we do paving, it always impacts some type of traffic, but most of the work is going to be done on the sides first, and then when we do the paving, of course, like when we paved Broadway, you know, one day we had one piece closed and then the next day we had it open, so...
It'd be nice to get a grant for 32nd Street Bridge before somebody gets killed. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Nadrowski?
Sharon Nadrowski, 126th Avenue, A. Just want to follow up on that. I thought it was just paving, but Mr. Carter just said something about doing gully work. Are we doing pipe work? Are we doing Suez, fixing Suez assets with this money?
There's no sewers there. It's gullies. We're going to be putting in sewers.
Is this, should, I remember the argument before in the past, and I thought it was deemed that that should be Suez's responsibility and not the taxpayers.
It's a city's infrastructure, right? Even though Viola is just the operator...
Oh, I completely understand that. I understand it's going to come from the ratepayers or the taxpayers, but if it should be, and it could come out of the mandatory improvement money that the Suez has to reinvest every year, the question wasn't really who, in the end, the taxpayer or ratepayer for the money is going to pay for it, but the question is, whose responsibility is it? That's what I'm asking for. Just, we could say that, you know, we're giving the money there, we're going to pay it anyway. Doesn't mean, you know, I'm going to pay somebody store because they're going to charge me in what they charge me for their product. Just if it's their responsibility, it should be their responsibility. That's just a question, because I know this has been an issue before.
I'm just saying, I just think we have grant money, so...
It doesn't...
I would want to get access to whatever grant money we could for the city and improve our infrastructure.
I would like grant money to come and pave my driveway, but it's my driveway, so it's my responsibility. Just because it's grant money, if it's Suez's infrastructure, it shouldn't be city grant money paying for it. That's my point.
It's not Suez.
My point is, it's not, it's not Viola's infrastructure. Suez is not even in the picture anymore.
Well, whoever is.
It's not, it's not Viola's infrastructure, it's the city's infrastructure.
And I would rather have Viola spend their mandatory money on another project.
I'm going to take the question, it's the question.
If this is grant money that's going to pay for this.
So we're just saying, so this is where this work is being done, this is the city's maintenance problem going forward? It's not Viola's? That's the question.
It's my understanding that once we make, once we make the improvements to our infrastructure, it becomes part of Bayonne's system, of which Viola is taxed as a concessionaire to maintain the system. That's how I understand it.
So we're making improvements that will eventually be absorbed into the infrastructure that Viola... that Violi is responsible for?
Responsible to maintain, but we own it.
All right, well, yeah, but we pay them to maintain it.
Right.
And now we're going to make the repairs and then turn it over to them.
It's not, it's, it's.
It's not making repairs, it's creating it. But, but if, so. If we had Violi do that work, they would pass that cost on to the customer, the rateholder.
I understand completely.
So by doing it through a grant, we're actually kind of helping the ratepayer out.
The ratepayer, the taxpayer, who do you think, grants don't come from the, you know, they come from tax dollars. But okay, I just.
We don't get in Bayonne, it will go to some other town.
I just want to understand where, so it's, who, who owns the asset in, who owns the asset in the end? Because it's been an argument going on for years.
And part of that agreement, I believe, was either two and a half or three million, which wouldn't cover this whole project anyway. So it would go on the ratepayers for the difference. So that's why I'd rather get the freight grant to pay for this and let them use their two and a half or three million mandatory that they have to do upgrades every year on other things, because even that's a drop in the bucket compared to what our old system needs.
I understand, I just is asking specific what this money is going to, who owns that, who's going to be responsible for it in the end.
Okay.
And on OR four, Mr. Booker.
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Weimer?
Aye.
Mr. La Palusa?
Aye.
Our one has been withdrawn and will be on the March 15th agenda. Our two is awarding the contract for improvements to the New Hook Road to KM Construction Corp. of Irvington, New Jersey, for total base bid amount for $3,779,6984.
Move it. Second.
Questions? And on our two, Mr. Booker.
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Weimer?
Aye.
Mr. La Palusa?
Aye.
And with nothing else, I will take a motion to adjourn.
Move.
And on the motion to adjourn, Mr. Booker.
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
It boosts me to vote aye.
Mr. Perez?
It boosts me to vote aye.
Ms. Weimer?
Aye.
Mr. La Palusa?
Aye. Good night.